I call to order the Rosemont Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, July 23rd. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
None, Madam Chair.
Is there any input from the audience on tonight's agenda for items that are not already on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move forward to the consent agenda. Are there any comments or questions on the consent agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Whitman.
Thank you. For the minutes, I would like to add a sentence under public hearing, item C, which was the variance request. There's not a lot of detail in the Commissioner's comments, but one thing I thought was important was this sentence, which I'd like to add to the minutes. Commissioner Whitman expressed concerns that there was not enough information in the record to make a decision regarding whether the unique circumstances criterion had been met. And that's the only addition I'd like.
And Madam Chair, staff can incorporate that language into their, if the Commission chooses to motion and agree to that.
Okay, in the Commissioner's comments section, you said Commissioner Whitman?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any, and just to be sure I have it correct, it was item C, the variance request by Nick Reitberger?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other comments or updates to the minutes? Okay, seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the modification proposed by Commissioner Whitman to item C, the variance request by Nick Reitberger, adding a sentence in the Commissioner's comments as Commissioner Whitman outlined.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. It was moved by Commissioner Keniger, seconded by Commissioner Reed. Sorry, I skipped that. And we have no old business, so we will move on to our public hearing section this evening, which is one item we have before us. It's a request by KJ Wach for approval of a PUD final site and building plan and major amendment to the Rosewood Commons planned unit development agreement to allow for construction of two commercial buildings with outdoor dining and a drive-through facility. And I will turn it over to Julia.
All right. So, like you had stated before, this is a request for PUD final site and building plan, and then also a major amendment to the Rosewood Commons planning development agreement. So, this was before the Commission, or was withdrawn before the Commission last July 2023, but that request is coming to you today. So, KJ Wach, Inc., is requesting a PUD final site and building plan and a major amendment to the Rosewood Commons planning development agreement to construct two commercial buildings in the northwest quadrant of Business Parkway and County State Aid Highway 42. So, the major amendment to the Rosewood Commons PUD includes deviations from the code related to landscaping, exterior materials, and parking surface setbacks. So, a little bit overview of the site location. So, you can see it's located in the northwest quadrant, within the Rosewood Commons second addition area, is located directly east of that newly approved My Credit Union, and then also west of that New Horizons area, which is east of Business Parkway. So, a little bit of overview of the site plan. So, the site area combined is about 1.72 acres. The current zoning of the site is MX-2 PUD, which is Highway Mixed Use Planning Development District, and the comp plan land use designation is CC Community Commercial. So, each parcel will contain one building. The building on the western parcel, which you can see here, is a standalone restaurant with an outdoor patio. And then that eastern parcel will contain a multi-tenant building with a drive-through facility, which you can see is on the eastern side, serving a fast food or fast casual restaurant. The outdoor patio is shown to be located directly south of the standalone restaurant, which you can see outlined in the photo on the right that says patio. And then the drive-through is shown to be located east of the multi-tenant building and then directly west of Business Parkway, which you can see the cars are shown within that drive-through area. Both the buildings do meet the required building setback regulations of the MX-2 zoning district, but does not meet the parking surface setback of 10 feet from the private road of 149 Street West. You can see on that northern portion, that's that private road. And this northern portion of the parking area does not meet that setback, so the applicant is requesting to eliminate that setback requirement related to parking on properties adjacent to private driveway easements, which that is a part of that amendment that the applicant is requesting. Then access and parking. So, the vehicular access into the site will be made from that private road, 149 Street West, which you can see on the north part of this site plan. The drive aisle that is shown off 149 Street will share access with that commercial development to the west, which is at My Credit Union area over there. The drive-through is shown to start on the southern portion of that multi-tenant building and then flow north towards that main access, and will, the traffic flow will flow counterclockwise. You can kind of see with that going north and then west to exit through 149 Street West. The city's fire marshal did request and receive an exhibit showing the turning radius of emergency apparatus with the site and found that the site layout is able to accommodate emergency vehicles. And then, kind of an overview of the parking. So, you can see up on the top part of this slide, it's our previous zoning code. So, with our newly adopted zoning code, there were quite a few changes with the parking requirements. So, you can see for restaurants, it was previously three stalls per seat, which previously would have been 73 stalls. For retail, it was six stalls, six stalls per 1,000 square feet, which would have been 12 stalls. For office space, it would have been five stalls per 1,000 square feet, which would have equaled that 19 stalls. So, with our previous zoning code, there would have been a requirement of 105 stalls, and they had provided 102 stalls. But now with our newly updated zoning code, those requirements did change a bit. So, you can see on the lower half with their current zoning code, now we require for restaurants one stall per four persons, which then equals 55 stalls as required. For retail, it's one stall per 300 square feet, so that would have been seven stalls required. Office space is that same as retail, so one stall per 300 square feet, which is 13 stalls. So, now the total requirement for the site is 75 stalls, and they still are providing the 102 that was previously provided in their submittal last year. So, now they are under that minimum requirement for off-street parking.
Julia, just to clarify there, that top line restaurant, 218 seats at one stall per three seats, right?
Yes, yes, sorry.
Okay, that's okay. Just wanted to call it out.
Yeah.
Since we're on that screen, thank you.
All right. So, moving on to landscaping and park dedication. So, the applicant's landscape plan shows a total of 32 trees and 193 foundation plantings to be planted on site. So, the city code does require one tree per 3,000 square feet of site area, which for this site would equal 25 trees, and the landscape plan is meeting that requirement of 25 trees, which you can kind of see in that table that is shown below the landscape plan. The city code also requires landscaping around the parking area equal to 10% of the total parking area, which that total would equal 18 trees for the site. The landscape plan is showing seven trees to be provided, so that is a shortfall of 11 trees. So, the full requirement for trees would be 43 trees, and they are going to provide 32. The applicant is requesting that deviation to the code that would not require the parking lot landscaping to be calculated in addition to the required based on the site area. And then the developer, also applicant, has requested that park dedication fees be collected at the time of a building permit, so that cash dedication for the site would be $15,480, which is a condition of approval within that PUD final site and building plan. Then a little overview of the architectural elevation. So, the zoning ordinance does require at least 50% of the building to be finished with brick or stone and no more than 10% ethus. The applicant is requesting the ability to include up to 18.5% ethus in exchange for including stone and brick beyond the required zoning ordinance. So, the plans that were submitted do show that 81.8% of the non-glass areas are brick and stone on the eastern multi-tenant building and then are 80.9% on the western restaurant building. And then here's kind of an overview of what was submitted for those elevations. Here's a couple more elevations shown of the multi-tenant building and also, this is the restaurant standalone one, and then this would be the multi-tenant building. And then kind of going overview with the permitted with youth standards. So, outdoor dining areas and drive-through facilities are accessory uses that are now permitted use with standards within the MX-2 Highway Mixed Use zoning district. So, previously in our old zoning code, they were conditional uses, but now they are permitted with standards. So, outdoor dining areas are subject to seven performance standards that are stated within Section 1168A of the newly adopted zoning code. Staff was able to make findings for the required performance standards, which were provided in the staff report. And then also, drive-through facilities are subject to the seven performance standards as well that are found within Section 11678 of the zoning code. Staff was able to make findings for the required performance standards and did include a condition to reiterate the standard that no public address system shall be audible from adjacent non-commercial property boundaries. So, a recommendation from the Commission today is a motion to approve the planning development final site and building plan to allow for the construction of two commercial buildings with outdoor dining and drive-through facility at 14904 Business Parkway and 2730 149 Street West, subject to conditions A through H. And then a motion to recommend the City Council approve a major amendment to Rosewood Commons planning development agreement, subject to conditions A through C. I can answer any questions the Commission may have, but I do know the applicant is in the audience as well.
Thank you, Julia. Are there questions for the, for staff at this time?
Julia, could you kind of talk through sidewalks and pedestrian pathways to this location a little bit? I can't really call, tell from the diagram.
Yeah, so on their site plan, you can kind of see here, there is a proposed sidewalk along the north side. You can kind of see, it's kind of hard to see, it's a little outlined. It's along that north side, that south of 149 Street West. Also, there will be sidewalks along the restaurant area, I do believe, as well. And then, that northern sidewalk connection will connect west. That you kind of saw that in the My Credit Union, too, so that will connect west, that whole sidewalk, and then will come down along, I believe, Business Parkway along this end to...
Because there's, there's, there's going to be a walkway on Business Parkway on that side, the west side, going north-south there?
Here's an aerial. I believe that that will be that way along Business Parkway. It's kind of hard to see, but it's outlined right there on that eastern, on that eastern side.
Does that sidewalk on 149th eventually connect to Biscayne?
It does look like in their plans that that sidewalk will extend east. With obviously New Horizons being there, it looks like they'll be adding on that sidewalk and then along with the future development on, along that side.
Yeah, there's a sidewalk today on the south side of 149th there that goes all the way to Biscayne.
Yeah.
The other question I had is on the, the plan that we've been used for specifications for parking spots and so on. You know, we've got the restaurant, we've got office space, and we've got commercial, retail. And the applicant may very well have tenants lined up, but is that fixed? Or, so if there were to be a change, let's say they wanted to do commercial on both open spots in addition to the restaurant, would that need to come back to the Planning Commission, or how does that get handled?
For off-street parking, or?
No, just trying to, so, I mean, is the, is the applicant, is the plan fixed and that it has to be restaurant, office, and commercial?
It just has to be a permitted use within the MX-2 zoning district for that use. And there's quite a few different uses for, sometimes it's a little bit generic with professional offices or whatever it is. It just has to be a permitted use within that zoning district, and it would be allowed to be within those buildings.
So, Madam Chair and Commissioner Reed, you know, maybe to clarify what you're getting at there. So, it would be, let's say the developer changes the user within, within there. So, to Julia's point, as long as the use is allowed, staff would, you know, re-look at the parking calculation, would typically be the main one there, and if it's still in.
Trash enclosures and so on?
Yeah, that would, unless there's a substantial change to the layout of the site plan, and there's adequate parking, then that would just move ahead as, as they would wish. We're not, we're not, sorry, we're not approving uses per se, but we're approving parking spaces based on the submitted types of uses, based on the calculations within.
Okay, got it. And then the last question I had is just about the monuments. I mean, I would be pleased to see the landscape plan look pretty robust. Is that clear on what kind of signage is going to be allowed there in that corner? I mean, we do have the residential area right next to it, so I'm kind of curious what, what standards will be in place for that.
Well, they'll have to apply for a sign permit, and there are regulations with that with site triangles, too. You have to be setback a certain amount from the site triangle, it's 25 feet, and then 10 feet away from your property line. So, the applicant does have to submit a sign permit application, and then staff works with them to make sure that they follow the regulations of the sign code with that.
There's limitations on height and?
Yes, correct. For each zoning district, there are different requirements with height, size, all those different requirements for monument and for wall signage as well.
Do you know offhand kind of what the height maximum here is for this?
For MX-2, I believe it's 10 feet. But again, with our newly adopted zoning code, there were some changes with that signage. So, I know that there was some changes within that since zoning districts did change. So, but I believe for this, it's 10 feet.
Very good, thank you.
Any other, yes, Commissioner Whitman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On that, on that sign idea, just to confirm, Julia, so we're not, we're not looking, that's not a standard in here of signs. That's something that's done at a, you know, if they want to do a sign, then it's done as a, not in front of the Planning Commission, basically, right?
Correct, yeah. They'll have to apply for any signage, and then we review it, or planning staff reviews it, as well as the building department reviews it, to make sure it follows code and also building standards, and then we do final inspections on those as well.
Okay. And, and so kind of transitioning then to what we are looking at tonight are these standards. And the thing that jumps out to me is, under the standards for outdoor dining area, number four, no public address system shall be audible from a non-commercial or non-industrial use or district. We've, we've seen that before in, in projects coming before us. And then under standards, drive-through facility, number six, which is also a public address system, and number seven, fast food uses may display menu boards. Okay. I'm pointing out those three because the findings under each don't really provide any facts. What they state is that staff has prepared a condition stating that the applicant, the project, will comply with these standards. And so, my thought on this is, well, wait a minute. Isn't our role to evaluate whether standards are being met here? And if we're just kicking the can down the road and stating, well, they will meet them, or the applicant will promise to meet them, or a condition of the project is to meet them, I feel like we're not, we're not actually fulfilling our obligations or being given the opportunity to fulfill our obligations because there's not something, some facts in there to show, are these standards being complied with, or how will they be complied with? I guess I'm stating that, and I, and I did alert Julia earlier today about this as well. Do you have thoughts on this?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Whitman, I can certainly address that, too. It's a little bit of a balance between a, a practice of getting efficient approval of an application, but it's also a product of the materials received from the applicant to staff to Planning Commission to make those recommendations and findings within the staff report. So, if that specificity isn't included in there, I think it was stated that we didn't receive material specific to that. I may advise that as part of the public hearing. You call upon the applicant to discuss their, their plans for the buildings, if they have tenants, you know, and I don't want to speculate or make assumptions, but if it's, if there isn't a user lined up, then it would be logical to kind of assume that they don't have a final menu board design or something to that effect. But to your point, Commissioner Whitman, yes, if you're, you know, being asked to make a finding of, within our code, that it's complying with the new standards under a permitted use in there, you're, a little bit of a, how are you making that? Or is it that practice of conditioning that approval on compliance with our code? So, I agree.
Yeah.
But you're put in a little bit of a situation there, and I would probably ask that the applicant speak to kind of where they're at with their, say, development plans.
Okay. And then, thank you for that. And that, that does make sense to me. And I think, number one, I personally would be looking for facts to support, you know, our findings on these standards rather than just conditioning that they will comply with a standard. So, I'm hopeful that, it sounds like maybe the applicant can provide those, those facts. If not, then I think we commissioners should discuss whether we should be kicking that can down the road as sort of a matter of principle, I think. So, thank you.
Any other comments for staff or questions?
Julia, I've got a couple.
Yep.
So, the, the application that's before us tonight, I noticed had some of the same conditions that were on it last year in terms of things that we requested the applicant to correct. But this, I mean, they had to resubmit, right? So, this was a new submittal?
So, it, what we did require them to resubmit an updated application, but they did submit the same civil plans and everything that was submitted in last year's request back in July.
I guess I'm just, I'm a little curious and a little frustrated that the things like replace the ash trees and fix the, like, we would have two less conditions if they would have fixed the stuff that was asked to be fixed last year. And in terms of the, the trees, I did notice that none of the trees that are proposed are coniferous, and I don't know if, we do have an opacity requirement for drive-throughs to be 90% opacity level, and I don't know that we're going to reach that with all deciduous trees along there. So, is that something that we can request of having?
You can include it?
Yeah, the Commission could include that. Okay, I just, I, in the winter, you're not, those trees are not going to have any coverage, and so you're not going to reach that requirement, I don't feel, with 100% deciduous trees. Also, now that the parking is, is reduced, and I know that this was not some, this is fresh off the press, so this was not something that they would have necessarily been able to address potentially before their application came in, but is there an opportunity to re-look at the parking? They have 25, in excess of 25-plus spots. Is there an opportunity to look at the parking and potentially not need that setback reduced to zero? Meaning that we could get something. Maybe we can't get 10, but can we get six or seven or eight if we remove those 19 spots along the north end and turn them into, into kind of the parallel-type parking spots that we've seen to the north of this, in the northern part of this site?
Yeah, the Commission could definitely have that conversation with the applicant as well. As long as, like, you can kind of see in this table, obviously there, that off-street parking requirement went down, so as long as they meet that 75 stalls, then they are within the requirement of the code, so.
Okay. And then, I kind of had the, a similar comment on the, the drive-through and, more the drive-through, not, not as much as Commissioner Whitman on the, the outdoor patio from an audio perspective, but we don't know where the display board is, do we?
Not in what the plans were submitted.
Okay.
Yes, correct.
Okay, because I think that that's, those four parking spots there, depending on where the display board sits, obviously ideally the display board, the more it can face south, the better that is from a noise buffering perspective from the rest of the neighborhood. But then I think those four parking spots become problematic because you're going to have some stacking at the menu board. And without knowing where the menu board sits, I, I feel like we, we don't have a good idea what the stacking looks like.
On the public address system piece, as I read it, it, it can't be audible from a non-commercial or non-industrial use district. Where is the nearest non-commercial or non-industrial parcel here? Because at 40, south of 42, it's commercial.
Yep.
Across, on the other side of Business Parkway, it's commercial.
Yes.
So, it's?
If you look at the site location, it's, yep, so directly east is that New Horizons, that's that MX-2. So, the closest residential?
So, it would be that northeast, so it would be a block away.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, so that might be easy to me, right?
Yep.
But we don't have any facts.
No, I agree. I just, I just want, I just want to make sure that I understand.
So, some of these might be simple to just put facts into support. But back to the menu board, I agree, like, well, I'm not sure if this is exactly what you're requesting or not, but there should be some design of a location of the menu board, I feel, and that could be done to give us a better sense. And yeah, it may impact other standards as well.
Right, it might impact those parking spots there, you know, it, it, it's, I can't, I mean, is that, so the, I know a block away is, across the street is residential, but the apartments that are, that are approved?
It's these six.
Yeah, so, so that would be a non?
It'd be high density.
It'd be high density right to the north of this property.
Correct, yeah.
So, just across the street, there is high density.
Yes.
Just to the east of the Suite Living.
Yep, so these six, so the four, that's north of Suite Living, and then these two directly east of Suite Living are planned for high density residential.
Residential. Okay. I think that's all my, oh, the other thing that I was thinking on the parking, too, if, if we do get some buffer in there, there is potential for potentially getting closer to that tree number as well, because there could be some additional trees planted in there.
Correct.
Also. Okay. That's all my, my comments at the moment. I think more for the applicant, probably.
Any other comments or questions before we move to public hearing?
Thank you.
Thanks, Julia. This item is a public hearing item this evening, so at this time, we will open up the public hearing. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak may do so at this time. Come into the podium, stating your name and address for the record. I know we do have a handful of questions. If the applicant would like to come forward and address them, we would be so appreciative.
I didn't know if this was the Planning Commission or?
It is, we are the Planning Commission, yes.
Do you still do complaints?
Um, so, at this moment in time, we are taking comment on the request from KJ Wach for the two buildings before us.
Oh, okay.
If you've got something else, we do have that at the beginning of our meeting, the audience input section, but if you want to just hang out a little bit till we finish this public hearing, we will come back to that section for you. Yes.
Warren, do you want to come forward and answer some questions?
Sure.
I just need you to state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, I'm Warren Isrelson, the owner of KJ Wach. I'm getting old, and my hearing isn't as good as it used to be. I got some hearing aids at Costco several months ago at the request of my family, and my wife kind of bugs me because I don't put them in very often. Should have worn them tonight. So, if I say, uh, what? Sorry. Anyway, but yeah, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I think I heard you talking about putting in parallel parking on the north row parking and instead of that, I mean, yeah, I have, I have no objection to whatever you guys want to see changed.
Yeah, so I think, first of all, seeing the updates that staff had asked for last time would be, last year would be good to see. And then the, with the parking regulations changing, it's my opinion, and the rest of the Commission, please chime in, but it's my opinion that if, if we can get some of that 10-foot required setback, rather than having the parking a butt right to the sidewalk to the street, that would, it would be nicer from that perspective, other than have, I mean, otherwise this, the majority of this property is all going to be, you know, block top and building. And so, now that we don't need so much parking, my thought is to minimize, to eliminate some of that parking and try and get that setback closer to what the requirement is.
Yeah, that would pull it back probably about 10. Yeah, that would pull it back probably about 10 feet.
Which is exactly what the requirement is.
If we did the parallel parking, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and even, you wouldn't even need the parallel.
Yeah, I actually wasn't even aware of the change in the parking standards. So, I don't know, I've been asleep at the wheel or something. So, that's why we tried to get as close as we could to the previous code, so.
From my perspective, with the new, with the new requirements, if we look at the part there immediately north of the, immediately north of the eastmost building, we could get rid of all of those parking spots.
You could, yep.
We, because we would still be well above the minimum parking required. And then, I think, depending on how that all worked out, that would be really close to then being able to accomplish the setback that's required and also give us more room for the trees. So, from my perspective, I think I'd like to see, I'd like to see that, you know, attempted or to see if, you know, if there's a reason that can't work, then we can be educated as to what that is. But I think fixing that, you know, when we fix some of the other stuff, I think that, that would obviate the need for any of those special, the special conditions.
So, what is the requirement, 10 feet from the property line or?
Yeah. And right now, it's zero. So, that's, that's kind of the...
Okay. Because it's not a right-of-way line in this case, because it's, it's just a private road there.
Yeah, it's the easement area with that, though, too, so it has to be set off.
Okay.
I think, I mean, so, that would be one thing to look at. Did you have other comments you want to make, or you want me just to go through the list of questions?
No, I, I guess I'd, I'd rather not totally eliminate all the parking. I, I kind of like the idea of some parallel parking there.
Or maybe half of it.
Because that does give an extra 10 feet, and that should be enough room to put some trees in there. So, we're, we're, help, help me understand this a little bit. So, we're short on trees in one category and long, long on trees in another category, but overall, we're about right? No?
Eleven short.
We're short, how many?
Eleven.
Eleven? Okay.
Julia, it might be easier if we have a seat, then we can converse a bit more. Sounds like the applicant will probably have a few more questions on, on some of their standards.
All right. More questions, fire away.
Okay. So, I think the, the most exciting thing everyone wants to know is, do we have tenants for the buildings?
We do have two interested tenants, yeah.
Okay.
Supreme Pizza, that's, a buddy of mine actually owns that, and he's, he only has one store right now, and that's in Savage, and he wants to expand out here. It's a long story, but he's the one that got me involved in this property 20-some years ago. The same guy, it's kind of interesting, he's, wants to come back.
So, would that be a sit-down restaurant, then?
Pardon?
Is that a sit, is that the sit-down restaurant location?
No, he would be in the, we're, we're going to start with the eastern building.
Okay.
The long, narrow one. He would be in the, not in the north chunk, but the one next to that, the next one down. And then, there's a taco, it's called K Taco, and they have like five locations now. So, they're interested in, in the north one with the drive-through. So, it'd be taco and pizzas. So, hope you like Mexican. I guess ta, pizza's Italian, whatever.
Taco and pizza.
Anyway, so that's, that's the north half of the building. We have tenants interested in that.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah. Oh, and by the way, on the apartments, we're in for building permit on the first building. We're just waiting to get that permit, so we should see something here this fall.
Did you say you had someone for the freestanding as well at this time?
The what?
The freestanding building.
The freestanding restaurant?
The restaurant that's by itself, not in the strip mall?
Oh, we, we don't have anybody for that yet.
Okay. So, with the, with the building, then, so it looks like we do have a potential change in the tenant from office space to more of a restaurant, if it's a pizza place. So, we'd want to make sure the seating, we'd want to make sure that the, the parking, the parking is a little bit different.
Oh, I see what you mean, yep.
So, we just need to make sure that if you're going to use a, have a different tenant, we want to, we don't want to...
Well, that was another reason, it was kind of good to see that, so it gives us more flexibility.
We don't want to cut off the 19 parking spots and then have a deficit, so we want to make sure we're, we're conscious of that.
Right. They're mostly takeout, this pizza place?
Okay. So, there's no seating, then?
They do have a few tables, but if you go in there, they'll only have...
Right. So, probably would be equivalent maybe to the office space then or something.
A dozen chairs, maybe.
Do you know where the, can you speak to where the, I think one of the other comments was where the fast-food menu board sign is going to go?
Where the menu is? You mean where the order?
Yeah. Where the order is, because obviously, there's going to be stacking behind that menu board, and also, from a audio perspective, the location of that.
That's a good question.
Okay.
I don't think we've figured that out yet.
Okay. So, it is what, it is, as Commissioner Whitman pointed out, it is one of the, the standards that we are to look at as part of it, and I think it, not, I don't think it's as important for us to know the size. I think that, that can be worked, but I think knowing where the, where the menu board's location is then speaks to the stacking of cars behind it, because I also think those four parking spots could be in jeopardy, because I think typically, like, in, in my head, I'm thinking of like Starbucks and stuff, right? The menu board is to the south, and you drive around, same thing at Dairy Queen, it's kind of, it would make sense to have it at one of those, like, that southern spot.
I would, I would think it'd be somewhere like in the middle of the building on the east side, is it?
That could be, too.
Does that make sense?
I think the further you, so I, I think we'd like to, I personally would like to see what you're thinking for that location, because I think the further you put it to the east side and the north, the closer it gets to the residential area.
The further north, the better?
No. The further north, the worse, because the further north, the closer you're getting to residential, and you can't, the sound...
Oh, I see.
Can't be heard from the residential area.
But if you put it too far to the south, then you're going to stack the cars in the parking lot where you don't want them stacked.
Where, where you might lose those four parking spots.
And then, Madam Chair, there's also, under, under the standard subsection one, the sign needs to provide information to the drive-through patrons only and does not provide supplemental advertising to pass-by traffic as well. So, that's something in the design that needs to be considered. Does not impair visibility or obstruct circulation.
The, the one comment I had, the coniferous trees, are you willing to look back at the landscaping plan and incorporate some coniferous trees along that eastern side where the drive-through is to try and reach that opacity requirement?
Sure. Whatever you want. Yeah.
Okay. Are there other comments or questions for the applicant that I have missed?
I have a question more, I think, for, for Adam or Julia. So, like, you know, with what was presented today, and we're talking about maybe, you know, some potential changes to setbacks, if the restaurant's not fully, you know, committed to a tenant yet, there might be changes in how that comes through at the end of the day. Like, are we supposed to be approving kind of like in principle with conditions, or do we wait till we get more of a firm, I guess, site plan with updates based on what we're providing as feedback?
Yeah. Madam Chair, Commissioner Beener, yes, good, good questions on that, and I think that speaks a little bit to the, the front half of the conversation that was raised by the planning commission in terms of, are we conditioning for things yet to be seen or yet to be determined? And is the planning commission being tasked to make findings based on things that you don't, you may not feel you have enough information for? For example, this discussion we've just had on the, the menu boards, and is it going to be able to comply based on a location which has yet to be seen? And Commissioner Whitman, you know, articulated a, a specific requirement about not providing advertising or other aspects. I didn't recall exactly what it was, but to passing traffic. So, with, without that, you know, you kind of have a couple of options in, in front of you based on this dialogue, which I, I think still may continue a little bit based on some additional questions that may, may arise. Or potential others in the audience that would have questions or comments on the, the development here. If you're looking towards moving to continue the item, that could certainly be an option for the commission to allow staff and the applicant to provide those revisions as discussed, and then staff can make then a, a second recommendation at a upcoming meeting. Or you could try to condition or direct staff to condition for a future meeting approval based on those future items. I would probably recommend against that, because that's kind of the path we started going down, talking about compliance with pieces that aren't necessarily provided as a part of the application.
I would be more on continuing it until we get some more further information. That's just how, based on the questions and the applicant's ability to answer some of them.
I, I agree with that. There's just, I mean, conceptually, I like the idea, but there's this, especially if there could be two restaurants there, what does that mean for trash enclosures? What does that mean to parking? It'd be great to see the concept, working with the city on the concept of getting rid of that or adding in that setback and getting rid of some parking. I think there's some great, great ideas that came up.
I also think, I think the trash enclosure is a great thing to point out, too. In this case, both trash enclosures are on the north side, and I know there are some requirements for, for needing to have space for the garbage trucks to get in and get the, the dumpsters and empty them, but obviously, when you drive in off the street, they're, they're on the north, north end there. I don't know that they can be relocated to the south or, or more out of the, the visible way, but I do like how the one building at the top kind of at least shields the trash enclosure from Business Parkway Road, at least, but, I mean, I don't know that there's a lot that can be done, but...
And, and just reiterate, reiterate, too, that I liked, you know, the opacity thing. So, like swapping in, or updating the landscape plan to have coniferous, replacing the ash trees would be great.
Okay. Are there any other questions for the applicant at this time? Okay. Even if we continue this item, we can close the public hearing tonight, though, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I think we're good for now, unless you have anything else you wanted to say.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this item this evening? Seeing that, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Kenner, seconded by Commissioner Reed to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Public hearing is now closed. So, it, it does appear that there's at least some consensus to continue the item. Is that kind of what I'm hearing? So, I'm just going to recap a couple of the things that I know I would like to see in the update. Please, other commissioners, chime in if I miss anything. I think the first one is to update the plans based on the staff requests that were made last year in July, as well as, as this time with the landscape plan, removing the ash and the trash enclosure to be the same materials, because if those get updated, we can then remove those conditions, and we don't have to have extra conditions on the approval. Reviewing the, the possibility to reduce the parking, potentially reducing or eliminating the northern parking to get that setback in place, 10 feet or, or very close to if we can't get the 10 feet, to see what we could do there to get that 10-foot setback in, and also adding some additional trees in that northern section to help mitigate the loss of, or the shortage on trees. Also, putting in some coniferous trees along the drive-through east side of the property to help with the opacity requirement that is in place for drive-throughs. And then, to see the, the location of the drive-through order board, where the placement is, so that we can evaluate the stacking at the order board, and also the direction of the speaker, and potentially may eliminate those four parking spots to the south of the building. I, go ahead.
Yeah. And then, if, if it's going to be, in fact, two restaurants and one office, for example, that, that should be looked at as well.
Yes. Good catch.
I did forget to ask, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
With the two restaurants, or, and this is probably for the applicant, so I don't...
That's okay.
Both of those restaurants in the, I'll call it the strip mall, are they both going to be considered drive-through or just one of them, so that you only need one menu board? Or, or is it going to be like a dual, you know, like we have with some restaurants where you can use the mark, the, the board for both restaurants? That's kind of a...
I don't want to speak for you, Warren. If you could just come up and address, I'm assuming that the pizza place and the taco place are separate entities, and only the taco restaurant will have a drive-through.
That's true.
The pizza place will not have a drive-through.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I, Julie, I know this isn't something that we necessarily always see, but a lot of times, we get, we see some color visuals of the building, and I know, you know, one of the things that's nice, would be nice is if we can kind of have some similar kind of colors, earth tones, the look and feel, so that we don't have all these different buildings that don't look like they all go together. I don't know that we, last year, got any colored visuals with this either. I think we did with the apartments. So, I don't know if they, if that's something you can pass along, if they have potentially any color renderings or what they're thinking from a, from a tone, just to see. I think it would look, be nice to kind of have it fit with the same kind of color tones that the apartment buildings are going to be, and make it kind of look like one development, one area. Anything else that I missed?
I, I, nothing else, I think, on this, but I, I just, the thought occurred to me, did, we sent out a communication to the local residents about this?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair. Just to add, to add to your list, I would also just include facts to support those outdoor dining area standards and drive-through facility standards related to the public address system not being heard in non-commercial or non-industrial uses or districts. And like we discussed, that might be easy to do, but something in there to support that, rather than kicking the can down the road and just conditioning that it won't happen. And then, also with the menu board, I would go a little bit farther, not just where it's located, but taking a look at the actual standards and having findings and facts to support that those standards are met. I feel that that's our obligation here. And so, if the applicant can just take a look at all of the standards, of course, the menu board that we discussed and the other things we discussed, but all of the standards to make sure that they're being met and explaining with facts how they're going to be met, that makes it a really easy job for us to approve the project.
Thank you, Commissioner Whitman, for those, those ads. Anything else? Okay. I will make a motion to continue this item to our...
I have a timeline up on that.
Okay.
Right there. You can kind of...
Oh, look at how fast you were. Okay. So, when do you, we could move it to the August 27th meeting, but when would you need the updated stuff from the applicant? I'm a little concerned about timeline from that.
Madam Chair, we can work with the applicant on a, a submittal timeline so that we could turn it around.
Is that quick? Okay.
Yeah. Sorry, I didn't want to speak for Julia there, but part of the thing that's noted on here would be when the city would be able to exercise its 60-day extension as a part of the application, and that projects those other dates out there. So, I guess the recommendation would be to continue it to your August meeting, and if staff and the developer aren't able to get those, those changes incorporated as recommended by Planning Commission in time, it would appear on your agenda, and it would likely ask for a continuance again.
Okay. Sounds good. So, I will make a motion to continue the request by KJ Wach to the August 27th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner, second, it's been moved by Commissioner Kenner and seconded by Commissioner Beedner. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. We're going to see you back in a month, Warren. Sounds good.
All right.
Okay. That concludes our public hearing section this evening. At this time, we will move back to our audience input section, and anyone in the audience would like to speak at this time to the panel, the Planning Commission may come forward and do so.
Is this, I, I was...
Ask you to just come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and then, and then we'll, we'll talk and answer whatever questions you have. and then, and then we'll, we'll talk and answer whatever questions you have.
Okay, um, my name is Sally Wilkowski. I've lived here for twenty years. I currently reside at 13579 Cross Glen Path. I was here July 2nd to make a complaint about my neighbor, so I don't know if I'm in the right place at the right time.
My guess is you probably were before the city council at that time.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
I was, so I should come back. Um, I should come back.
Madam, Madam Chair, Sally.
Pardon?
Yes, you were at the, the July 2nd city council meeting?
Yes, I was.
Yep, I, I believe our staff, potential, our police department had some follow-up with you. If you would like, if you would like to come back to the next city council meeting, that would likely be the, the best.
When, when would, when is that?
Our next city council meeting is August 5th.
Okay.
At 7:00 PM.
And I've had, I've had no follow-up. I was supposed to have some police follow-up. I've had no contact at all with the police, so that's why I'm back here again.
Yep, you're, you're welcome to come to the city council meeting on August 5th. I will also pass it along internally to our, our team to follow up with you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Sally.
Wrong place, wrong time.
No.
You're okay, I am so sorry for making you wait.
Thank you for coming.
I don't want, I don't want to find a building.
Do we have any new business?
Um, no.
Discussion?
Yes, two, two items, Madam Chair. First, Alicia wasn't able to be with us this evening, but I do want to share that this would have been her last meeting with the city. She's moving on to a new position in her career, so we will be looking to fill that position, hopefully, quickly. But just want to publicly acknowledge and thank Alicia for her time with the city of Rosemount. She's done an excellent job and handled a wide variety of tasks, including being in front of you as a commission, not only as our staff, as recording secretary, but also as presenter on a number of items. So certainly, thank you to Alicia for her time here. And certainly, if you guys happen to run into her, please thank her as, as well.
Thank you. And, and I will just, on behalf of the commission, please pass our thanks and gratitude on to Alicia for keeping us organized, sending us our packets, making sure we're here at meetings, and keeping us all informed on what's going on, so, and wish her luck in her future endeavors.
Um, the second item, just to, to note, and I'll turn this over to you, Madam Chair, but as a part of an award ceremony of financing commerce, Frana Companies here within Rosemount was nominated and received an award. And our mayor, as well as Melissa, as our chair of the Planning Commission, attended on behalf of the city. And if you'd like to share any thoughts or comments on that event, turn that over to you.
Sure, thank you. I did last, last week attend the Top Projects event, dinner and event in Minneapolis along with the mayor and a handful of representatives from Frana Companies. Frana was nominated as a Top Project of the Year for their building here in Rosemount that they built. They were also Contractor of the Year on a handful of, or, I'm sorry, they were also Contractor on a handful of other top projects that were on, being recognized that evening. And then they were also up for the Contractor of the Year award. They did not receive the Contractor of the Year award, but they were one of, I think, the four finalists for that award. So it was a great event, great to, to kind of chat with Frana Companies. They are very happy with their building here, very happy to be in Rosemount and located here, and had great things to say about their, the couple of years they've been here so far, so it was a great event. Anything else for discussion?
That was it from staff.
That's great.
And with that, I will just quickly review, we've got our, our upcoming meetings, August 27th. We, Commissioner Reed will not be able to be in attendance that evening. If anybody else is not able to make it that evening, please email Julia and Adam. There are two sitting here, they get the emails. Make sure you tell Anthony I spared him the other's. And then September 24th and October 22nd. And so those are three upcoming meetings. And then in Alicia's absence, I would assume we should look for a packet from...
Somebody.
Somebody, okay. Okay, I know we have in the past sometimes had them go to spam sometimes when it's somebody, so if, if maybe staff can email out once it goes out, but who it came from.
We can do an additional check-in to make sure that it has...
That would be great, that would be great. I just know we have a variety of email addresses, so, okay. With that, I will adjourn this evening's meeting. Meeting adjourned.